To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call it members.
Thank you.
Here it all.
Here.
Terry Smith?
Here.
John Zerwick?
Here.
Jeff Biden? Andrew Grass?
Here.
Justin Donovan?
Here.
Kathleen Waltz?
Here.
Joe Prince?
Here.
We have a call.
Well, the agenda, on the agenda, we have Michael and Jenna Mills requesting a special use permit and a variance to install and operate an illuminated digital LED freestanding pole sign in a commercial district at 181 Washington. Cassie and Erin Woolk are requesting a special permit to operate an in-home hair salon in a residential district at 1045 Westwood. And Robinson, Robinson Outdoors LLC is requesting a special use permit to erect and operate a V-shaped, double-sided, 10 by 20 LED digital di- digital billboard at 716 St. Genevieve Drive. Have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval amendments from March 1st, 2018.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we have introduction of evidence.
Here I have the municipal code of the city of St. Genevieve, comprehensive city plan, and in front of you, you have staff reports, and there were some associating documentation sent to you via email, which I have copies of if you need.
Motion to accept the evidence as presented?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input, I take, is there anyone here that has any input on anything other than agenda items? Will move forward, new business. Michael and Jenna Mills are requesting a special use permit and a variance to install and operate illuminated digital LED freestanding pole sign in a commercial district at 181 Washington. Give your staff report.
Staff report. Just to go over, the application was submitted to 28th November, published in the Herald on 19th, applicants were mailed the information on the 3rd of December. Police and fire departments chiefs were notified and they responded by the 31st of December, you have all that information with you. To clarify, the only question that we're solving here tonight at planning and zoning is whether the digital LED portion, the illuminated digital LED portion of the sign can be placed there, it be a variance to the ordinance. Right now, it's only allowed in certain sections of the city, and so the variance, as the ordinance reads, comes in the form of a special use permit, and that's what you all are deciding tonight. The property itself is bordered on the north by residential apartments and an open undeveloped field, on the east by a combination of commercial and residential use properties, on the west by a commercial auto body repair shop, and on the south by a combination of residential and commercial property. The southwest corner of the building is approximately 177 feet from our R2 residential district, and the southwest corner of the lot is approximately 100 feet from said district. There are some regulations in there on when the lights can be on, but we already had that conversation with the applicant. The installation and operation of this sign at this location has already been granted a certificate of appropriateness by the St. Genevieve Heritage Commission. Municipal code is quoted here as far as sign ordinances, what I want to direct you to is on the second page, municipal codes, section 405, 205F, table summary of permitted signs provides that freestanding pole signs and illuminated sign types are permitted within a C2 zone district. It also provides that LED digital message sign types require special use permit from planning and zoning commission, board of aldermen within any zoned district. They are only permitted in C1, C2, I1, and I2 zoning districts that are located on the following roadways, the 500, 600, 700 block of Center Drive, the 600 to 1,000 block of Roger Drive, St. Genevieve Drive, Highway 32, Highway 61, and Progress Parkway. To go on to the third page, special use permit, subject to the provisions of this section, the board of aldermen, the city of St. Genevieve may, after public hearing before the board of aldermen after studying report by the city planning and zoning, authorize special uses in any district as herein qualified, which the uses are otherwise prohibited based on whether the building will, and then you've got those lists of six things, I know you all familiar with them, but whether it will substantially increase traffic hazards or congestion, whether it will adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, whether it will substantially increase fire hazards, whether it will adversely affect the general welfare of the community, whether it will overtax public utilities, and whether it will be in conflict with the comprehensive city plan. There are a few more sections of municipal code cited there, last one I want to refer to is the very last one cited, which is 405, 220F3, which states, "Request for variances from the little, literal provisions of the zoning ordinance in instances where strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would cause undue hardship due to circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration, and grant variances only when it is demonstrated that such action will be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the provisions of the zoning ordinance." That kind of gives you a description of the variance, it has to provide undue hardship. Down below that, findings of fact, hereby found that the request is used, and again, you have copies of what the police chief and fire chief submitted, they're not the hard copies, but they were electronically sent to you, both police chief and fire chiefs didn't find any problems with congestion or fire hazard. So will not substantially increase traffic hazard or congestion, could adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, will not substantially increase fire hazards, will not adversely affect the general welfare of the community, will not overtax public utilities, and does not conflict with the comprehensive city plan. Before I read the recommendation, I do want to let you know I was contacted, I gave you a hard copy of an email I received just about a half hour ago, I was contacted by seven people, one pro, six against. Staff recommends the following standard motion, denial based on location, the sign type is only allowed on specific roadways per municipal code 405, 205G1. If an undue hardship is evident, and the variance is granted to the applicant, the special use permit could be granted with the following terms and conditions, and you have those there in front of you. That's my report.
Michael and Jenna, would you like to address the board?
How you doing? Michael Mills, this is my wife Jenna Mills, we own Buddy's Place. We are currently redoing the old Eagles building, and looking to move our building down there, our business. We are getting a lot of stuff done, making a lot of changes, permits I've applied for, this is another one, to move forward with the move of my business. When we started this, we only was looking for something small to do, well, it turned out a little bit better than what we thought we was going to end up with. It's mainly a family-oriented restaurant, most of my wife's family, and, well, my son works there sometimes, but what we're looking for is the sign, you know, we already own it, I know it's something that we have on 61, and with the meeting that we had before, you know, the guidelines that was set, and we had bought by them, and just, you know, we just want to, we spent some money on it, we'd like to move it with us, and make it part of the new place. There is, there is ups and downs to it, there's pros and cons, you know, we're going to listen to the pros, we're going to listen to the cons, but, you know, we're here today just to make sure that we are standing beside what we want, and we would like for our sign to be moved with us when we move. It's, it benefits us now, and I'm pretty sure it'll benefit us later, so, you know, we are off the beating path, we're on the edge of the commercial district, residential district, so when people go down Main Street, they see what's on Main Street, when they go by us, they're going to see that sign lit up in the evening time during business hours. It will, it will, and it should, you know, give people the place, hey, just go past Stella's or go past the BND, and you'll see it, you know, it's going, the restaurant will bring business to the downtown. And, you know, all that business will be brought to us and to all the other businesses that are in town.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, as it's called after granted, variance say, it has to cause undue hardship, what would you describe, what undue hardship would this cause your business if, if you weren't allowed to?
The LED part of the sign.
This is the only, the bottom section of the sign.
Mm-hmm.
The one that displays our menu, our program, our specials, our hours, and, you know, certain things like that. It costs us money for it, we, we paid a great deal of money for it, you know, that will be a loss to us if we won't be able to use it.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Would you still put the sign up even if you couldn't use the LED part of it? You know what I mean? Like the sign?
That is two separate signs.
So it is two?
There's a top section, and there's a bottom section.
Okay, so it's not attached to like?
No ma'am, no ma'am, it's just mounted on the same pole.
Okay, gotcha.
Anybody else from the board? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of? Anybody? Anybody who wants wish to speak?
We just need to leave.
Oh, okay. No one else to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak against? You can step in podium, mistake your name and address, please.
There are obviously several people who want to speak, so I would encourage whoever starts to speak to say whatever it is that you have on your mind, if that person has expressed your point of view in the interest of time, then we don't just need to keep repeating the same thing over and over again.
Correct.
I'm Jean Shattuck, I live at 406 North 3rd Street, St. Genevieve, near the corner of Washington Street. I disagree with a characterization of not being able to use the sign as being an undue hardship. The money has already spent, and the inability to use something that you've already bought is not necessarily an undue hardship. I believe that a sign of this character will adversely affect the character of the historic district in which it was located, this district does not even permit existing business owners to hang signs perpendicular to their buildings, let alone put neon signs in. I drove through the historic district tonight, up South Main Street and down Merchant, and there are no signs like that in the historic district, the only remotely similar thing was a 12-inch open sign that was lit up in somebody's window. It's clear that the enforcement of the historic restrictions on signs of this type in the historic district has preserved the character of the district, and I would like to voice my support for refusing the application to install such a sign. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon McBride, I know, I own Bean Nick Cafe and Pastry on North Main Street, and I would just like to say that, that just because we have an objection to your sign doesn't mean we have an objection to you.
Absolutely.
We're very excited that you're coming, we're very thrilled to have more people coming down on Main Street, this is all going to be wonderful, so that's not the issue at all, and I'm hoping that that's understood clearly. We've got, we have a document that is 154 pages dedicated to all of the historic preservation aspects of this district, to maintain it, to have proper signage, to all of those things, and so I'm really just surprised that we, that we're even, we've even gotten this far, it seems like such a simple thing to me, that this should not happen. When I, the last person in this position was Carla, was the person that I dealt with with my sign when I opened, and I was, I just brought her down, I said, "Just tell me what I need to know about making my sign," and it was very clearly stated, no lit within signs, all of the signs needed to be small in comparison to the building, any build, any sign that you wanted to put into your place needed to be on the inside, the interior, then I could do what I wanted to do, as long as it wasn't neon or lit within, it certainly couldn't be electronic, all of those things were clearly stated to me, to the point where it was, "Don't bother to even turn anything in," because the answer is no, so, I'm very surprised that this even passed something. So, I mean, I think we're talking about, that now is not the best time in terms of setting a precedent that goes separate than the rules that are clearly established, I'm going to have the entire document in front of me about all the rules that we are allowed to follow that are in writing, so, and there are three or four of them that this sign clearly says that, can't have it, so I'm confused about that. That, that we have all of this in place to maintain something, and now the national parks are coming in, and now, now is not the time to say, "We're going to throw out this historic thing out the window," and it just doesn't make sense to me that we're even having this conversation, it's just not appropriate in downtown. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Pat Fahey, my wife Susan and I own the Main Street Inn, we're the next-door neighbors to the new restaurant, and I would welcome them to the neighborhood, I would underline neighborhood. I've seen the sign, it's a very nice sign for Highway 61, we're in a neighborhood in the historic district, and as a business owner next door, we host people from many areas, but particularly St. Louis and other cities who come to St. Genevieve because of its unique historic, small-town flavor, and to move into an inn or to check into a room and have a neon sign next door is exactly the reason people don't want to be in the big city, and why they want to come and spend their time in, in our town, so I would join the other people who've spoken in opposition to a special variance for that sign.
I'm just going to take a couple minutes. Micah Rowsey, I live at 555 North 3rd Street, the old brewery building. First I want to, first I want to congratulate Michael and Jenna Mills for the success in their business, and again, welcome to the neighborhood, I want to reiterate, that's the one thing that I will reiterate, is that being in opposition to the sign, I'm happy to have another restaurant in downtown, and one that I can go walk to, and to join the other restaurants downtown. While I appreciate the want and desire to use their existing sign from the Highway 61 location, that type of sign is inappropriate for a location within our historic district, so much so, we have an existing ordinance against such signs. The existing sign is intended to attract people driving by at higher rates of speed to a building set aback from the road, without a sign like that, nobody would know that there was a restaurant there. The new location is completely different, the speed limit is 20 miles per hour, the building is right next to the road, and most importantly, there's a good reason for the ordinance. Main Street programs across the nation recommend it against LED and internally lit signs, they are too bright, especially at night, most importantly, have an appearance that detracts from the historic content of the, of the downtown district, and create visual clutter that removes from the focus of historic buildings. In real estate, everyone has heard the three most important things, location, location, and location. Because of that, we have to recognize that a highway frontage restaurant is a vastly different business than one nestled in a historic district. We have to recognize that signage for one business isn't appropriate for another, a new business requires new signage. I understand there can be a feeling of loss when a specific investment to a business needs to be abandoned, but it isn't appropriate for this commission to approve the installation of an inappropriate sign simply because the owner already had it installed at another location. It is a sunk cost, which isn't a hardship. I submit to them, and to you, that appropriate signage for the building and business would likely even cost less than the removal and subsequent installation of this sign in the new location. It is your responsibility to protect the integrity of our historic district and keep the focus on the buildings, yes, I recognize that this particular building isn't historic, but its neighbors are. The national park designation came to us because of our architecture, please don't allow the installation of this sign, and encourage the business owners to develop an alternative, more appropriate sign plan for this location. Thank you.
Call for the question.
Good evening, Commissioner, good evening, neighbors of St. Genevieve, I'm Terri Scott, I am the innkeeper at the Main Street Inn on the corner of Washington, Maine, I've known the Mills, Jenna, and them, one of the first things, I met, one of the first people I met here, I'm fond of them, I've eaten at their restaurant a lot, they have, they brought an amazing atmosphere. I'm not in favor of the sign because of things stated by everyone else, one of the things I've learned as I've been the innkeeper a short amount of time is, we are a team, every small business down there, "Terri, we're in here for St. Genevieve, where would you recommend to eat?" "Well, there's here, there's here, there's here." "How about your coff-" I, I'm up early, "Is your coffee ready?" "No, but you can go down to Bean Nick, you can get a cup of coffee." "Where can I get a nice, nice liver dumplings, I've heard that they're amazing." Buddy's Place, right next door. So, I, the sign, I mean, it shoots right back in our common area, so I know that they have discussed possibly times to turn it off, but as the summer and spring come into effect, our guests sit out in that common area, we have a, a table and chairs, they can relax, we can have a cocktail, we're going to, you know, do some things in the summer, and that possibly because as Mr. Fahey said, they come here for respite or something different than they can find in the big city, that possibly could have something to do, but I think we're a great community, we're a great word-of-mouth community, and certainly, I think that, "Where would you eat, recommend to eat tonight?" "Autobahn is closed on Sunday, someone's not open this time, Stella and me's open for lunch." I can, think I can fairly say, all of the common business owners in this town would certainly reach out and recommend Buddy's Place without that sign. Thank you.
Okay, a member of planning is addressing the question, which is the conclusion of this discussion. So, my question is, we recognize that all the remaining speakers will be in opposition to the proposal, so we don't really need to hear that. And we identified that its inconsistent objections relate to its inconsistency with the character of the neighborhood and the historic district, and the possibility of the lighting of the sign, and its digital nature disrupting some of the adjacent businesses and activities. Does someone have additional information to bring relative to this issue? Would like to speak on that information.
I'd like to go up there.
You've already spoken.
Hi, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a reason why we're separating the two, the lit and the electronic?
Yes, because the sign without the digital display is consistent with the ordinance and is allowed use without any further action.
I'm aware of.
It's already, it's already approved by landmarks, and it, it fits into the sign guidelines as an illuminated sign.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. It qualifies in any commercial district.
I mean, it needs to go through the Heritage Commission, and it has.
It has.
Besides that, an illuminated sign, the checkmarks across residential, commercial, industrial are all in the table in the ordinance, they're, that sign's allowed in any, in any zoned district.
Will it be on the poll?
Yes. The only thing in question here is if the digital LED is allowed. Does anyone else have anything to address? The board have any questions?
The landmarks commission approved, do you all have to follow their guidelines?
We have, we have nothing to do with the illuminated part, it's already approved.
And no, they don't have to follow the design guidelines of the Heritage Commission.
All we are here to approve or, or deny is the digital part of the sign.
This commission goes by the city ordinances and the comprehensive plan, the Heritage Commission goes by the design guidelines, and they are guidelines, I'm not defending either position, I'm just stating they're guidelines, that's what they went on and they chose to approve it, whether you're pro or con to that, but this board now has to base their decision on ordinance and comprehensive city plan.
Do we know whether or not the lit portion's coming before the board of alderman?
No, it, it's a done deal, it, it meets the guidelines.
When was the internally lit last sign approved, and who approved it?
It was approved by the Heritage Commission in a meeting here about a month ago, that was posted in the paper.
The illuminated part of the sign, they can put up, they don't have to come up?
They didn't need it, it follows the illuminated sign.
Right, right, this is just for the LED part.
Right, the illuminated part is in the guidelines.
It's in the ordinance.
Yes, or, yes.
Right.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
H1 illumination, illuminated signs within residential districts may be directly illuminated by direct or white light that does not flash or move and will not result in glare or spillover of lot line. And then it says, "Signs in residential districts," what does that mean? "May not be internally illuminated."
This is, this is in a commercial zoned area.
Yeah, but there's a house in the apartment, and I live across the street.
It's, it's a commercial zoned area.
The district is commercial.
Yes.
The residential district begins at the intersection of Second and Washington, that's what I stated earlier, it's 177 feet from a residential district.
But there's a house right across the street, and I live across the street.
You have, you have a house in a commercial district, which is allowed under the ordinance. The question now is, is there any discussion among the board? Is there? The motion person.
I need a motion?
A motion for what?
I know that's what I'm asking.
For approval or deny. And then, there will be discussion among your commissioners.
I make a motion to approve or deny.
No, you have to make a motion for one way or the other.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. What did she say? Oh, I'm, I'm, according to ordinance, I make a motion to deny.
I second the motion to deny.
Now discuss, if you want to.
I feel that...
Who was the second, Gary?
Gary, yeah. Gary, yeah. I mean, I think that if we stop following guidelines and ordinances, then we lose the characteristic of our community and our neighborhoods. And being a national park is very important to us and we work very hard for that. And I feel that their sign, their illuminated sign would bring, I would drive to Illinois to go to Buddy's Place because they have very good food. I would drive any, I don't think the illuminated part of the sign is going to deter people from, the digital, the digital part of the sign is going to deter people from eating there.
Not having it.
Yeah, by not having it. I don't feel that it's going to stop people, so that's where I'm, according to...
I agree, and I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm actually surprised this made it through the Heritage Commission. I'm shocked.
Absolutely.
Because I don't think personally that this is, should have even come to us.
Absolutely.
And I don't think the lit portion is appropriate either for the historic district. And I think the Heritage Commission may want to revisit this, but that's just me. So, other than that, being as a national park destination, a business owner, an educator in this community, moved this community 15 years ago because of the historic destination. I vested myself in my life in this community. I want to maintain the historic preservation. I want it to be historic.
We would never put a McDonald's or a Rowley's downtown.
No, it don't belong downtown.
So, is there a way to get the Heritage Committee to revisit with this?
You have to ask my city administrator.
Which would be Martin Toma?
No, they, 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 they've acted.
So, the Alderman can trump that, yes? But their action, David, can the Alderman trump that decision of the Heritage Commission?
According to ordinance, it's not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Then you need to revisit.
You can certainly voice your peaceful opinion to the Heritage Commission at a Heritage Commission meeting.
The rest of this discussion is not relevant to this.
The agendas are posted.
I don't give the Herald.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion amongst the board?
Just to clarify, the motion is to deny the LED portion of the sign.
The LED, the digital portion of the sign. Any other discussion?
So, if we deny here, they can take it to the Board of Alderman to appeal it.
A denial here can be appealed to the Board of Alderman.
And they have the final say.
And the Board of Alderman has the final say if it's appealed to them.
It goes before them regardless, doesn't it?
No, sir. Approval automatically goes to the Board of Alderman. Denial can be taken up by motion of the board or appeal of the applicant, which that would be up to the Mills.
Can I ask one question? When is the expected opening date for the Buddy's?
Do you have an expected opening date?
Uh, no, not yet.
Okay, so they have a little bit of time.
Motion, second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
The motion is to deny the sign. Gary Smith?
Yes, deny the sign.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Anthony Grass?
Yes.
Shawna Zerwick?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Kathleen Waltz?
Yes.
Gary Roth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think it's like a...
We still have two on the dock.
Move on. Cassie and Erin Wolf are requesting a special use permit to operate in-home hair salon.
May I make a motion to approve that, please?
I can't hear anything.
Okay, we still have a meeting going on. We still have two topics, so if you can either keep it down or leave quietly, please.
Good job.
I'm a teacher.
Yeah. Wrangle it.
Good job.
Cassie and Erin Wolf are requesting a special use permit to operate an in-home hair salon at the resident district at 1045 Westwood.
David, may I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I seem to be educated. Is there anything that would restrict this? Or, I mean, they have to have special use, I understand that, but it's residential, right? So, did you, did you come up with a recommendation for the board on this?
I did. It's in the stat report.
And you recommended that we do, yes?
It's a recommended approval.
I should make sure I'm clear on that.
Give him, give the stat report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on that. Sorry, Bob.
So, we have a special use permit application for an in-home hair salon at 1045 Westwood that is in a residential, single-family zone district. The application was submitted on December 13th. Applicant mailed and adjoining property owners mailed information on the 19th, placed in the Herald at 26th and December, notified fire and police. Their recommendations were attached to the file I sent you earlier and meeting notice sent to the media on the 31st. The property is located, as I mentioned, in R1 single-family residential zone district. Property is bordered on the west, east, and south sides by residential property and a wooded area of an agricultural zone lot on the north side. You have the municipal code sections there that talk about what a single-family residential district is allowed. And if you'll read on down there, it says, under A1H, customary home occupations, provided that there shall be no external evidence of such occupation except a small announcement or professional sign not over two square feet in area and attached to the building with special use permit. Under home occupation, you have the definition as provided in ordinance there. You flip the page, you have the off-street parking regulations that are provided in municipal code. And then again, you have the special use regulation items that we decide on. The special use regulation provides the following: special uses are authorized, providing they comply with all regulations set forth in this chapter for the district in which such use is located. That's municipal code, section 405-200, subsection D, number 20, E, any C district use in an R1 district or an I-2 district. Under specific findings of fact, it is hereby found that the requested use, with the below stated terms and conditions, will not substantially increase traffic hazards or congestion, will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, will not substantially increase fire hazard, will not adversely affect general welfare of the community, will not overtax public utilities, does not conflict with the comprehensive city plan, pardon me, and offers adequate off-street parking. My recommendation is for approval conditioned on the following: prior to occupancy, the hair salon area may not be occupied until any final building permits or occupancy permits that are sought are issued. Owners shall maintain a business license with the City of St. Genevieve under municipal code, chapter 605 Business Licensing. Owners shall provide in a conspicuous location at all times an operable ABC 10-pound fire extinguisher. Hours of operation, including deliveries, will be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Only residents of the dwelling may be engaged in work activities of the residence. No display of product shall be visible from the street. No form of signage related to the business allowed except for a small announcement or professional sign not over two square feet in area and attached to the building. The applicant is to provide not less than two off-street parking spaces to use by guests. The number of vehicles used by clients or business-related visitors shall be limited to two at any given time. And there shall be no external evidence of the home occupation on the building or lot except the small sign referenced in number seven and the parking spaces referenced in number eight. I have had three contacts, either phone call or in person, two were okay with it as long as there were hours of, or limited hours and parking restrictions, and one was against. That's my report.
Erin and Cassie, would you like to take the podium and address the board?
Okay. I don't know that we really have a lot to bring today because we aren't trying to do anything that isn't allowed. We, we're going to keep our sign within regulations on the building. That'll be the only sign exterior. I'm only going to be one person servicing clients, so I can't physically service more than one to two at a time.
So, you're not, you don't, in the future, plan to bring like another chair in?
No.
Sometimes that happens.
Yeah. My goal of this was to slow down a little bit more in life versus speed up. So, it was just to save us the cost of booth rental fees in another salon, get me a little bit closer to home, a little bit more accessible to my kids and my husband.
Are you going to keep your photography studio?
I'm not keeping the photography studio. We kind of looked into everything we were doing and I just didn't use it enough to, you know, most of my photography work is outside of the studio. And I'm in talks with the hospital about doing newborn work with them. If that progresses, I will have no use for a studio, so.
Motion to approve.
Anybody here to speak in support of it? Anyone to speak against it? Go ahead and stick the podium. Take your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Connie Williams and I live on 1047 Westwood Drive. Okay, and this is nothing personal whatsoever, but we do not believe a business belongs in a residential area. There is no parking in front of the property, for one thing. We do not want parking in front of our home and we don't want our drive to be used as a turnaround. And I believe businesses belong in commercial districts where there are plenty of parking and will not affect residential living. We want to live in a residential area where the movement of traffic will be our neighbors and the normal everyday aroundabout ways. And then I have, we have owned our home for 28 years. I've always believed that zoning restrictions prevented businesses from sprouting up in neighborhoods. Who doesn't want to live in a quiet neighborhood? And so, let's see. And I, I believe like this town has plenty of vacant buildings where someone could open up a salon downtown where the parking is unlimited, you know, and you're not blocking somebody's, you know, yard or if somebody's throwing a ball, you don't have to worry about the ball hitting somebody's stranger's, a stranger's vehicle or something. I guess I'm a fashion, but I just believe that, you know, residential areas are meant to be residential areas that you grow up in.
I'm Tim Williams, Connie's husband, and there is actually no parking in front of their house. It's the driveway pretty much only, and it goes from our house to the other neighbors. We just rather not have parking in front of our house.
Would it be possible to have Cassie to tell her customers not to park on the street, to park in the driveway?
Well, I don't know. That's up to them. I'm not sure.
Depends on how many vehicles there.
I just, I think we're kind of losing some of our privacy of our home because our yards are so close together, you know, and I'd hate to have to put up a big fence just to kind of limit our privacy, but, you know, when you're in your yards and stuff, you just kind of like that feel of a residential area. And I just believe that, you know, businesses belong in commercial areas. I don't know.
There's already enough traffic.
You know, we have such a small subdivision, we don't really have too many limitations, but, you know, we just like it to be homey.
Part of the recommendation, and, you know, it's fine to be against this, but part of the recommendation, if you so choose to adopt it, was to provide two off-street parking spaces. Is that provided?
I can fit probably 10 cars in our driveway.
Okay.
Obviously, we won't be doing that, but we have a very large, long driveway.
So, the special use permit, you know, if you so choose to adopt those regulations, would be stipulated upon all those terms and conditions. And if it was violated, the special use permit could be revoked.
And that's good for six months?
A year.
A year?
Well, that's up to you.
Yeah, we can set. So, you don't see nothing wrong with a business popping up in a neighborhood?
I don't judge wrong or right. I just make a recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
My name is Chris Ferris and I live next door to them. I live right on the corner. And first of all, I'm just against it. Now, here's my reasoning. One, I have, when you, Westwood and Market together there is such a bottleneck. It's the one we haven't had a major wreck here from the school buses of a morning. People are trying to go in and out of there. It's a one-way street. And people, and we got the buses going, we got the kids going to school, in and out, in and out. Like I said, and she has no parking. I got all, all the roadway there, and when people have parties, I live on Market Street, well, guess where they park? Right in front of my house. And it's a bottleneck. It's a wonder we haven't killed somebody right there. I got, I think, I own like 150-some feet of road space there. They own 30. And two, within the next five years, I want to sell my house. I want to retire. I want to move somewhere else. This is a residential area and that's what it needs to stay. You know, if I'm trying to sell my house, the people want to live in the residential area. They don't want to live in a, in a commercial district. They don't want that. They want to live where it looks good.
Well, it's not going to change the district at all. It's still going to stay residential.
Huh?
It's going to stay residential.
No, it's still no.
I mean, a lot of people, to be honest with you, a lot of people run businesses out of their homes and nobody ever even knows it.
No.
Don't even apply for permits, so I mean, it's...
You know, it, it's just, like I said, in that corner there, when you come onto Westwood, the corner that goes all the way, it's the one, you know, it's the one we hadn't killed somebody. Had a bad wreck in and out because there's only one way in and one way out. It's a dead-end street. And I don't think it needs to be there. None. Thank you.
Anyone else, Sonny?
David, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
As we're sitting in front of speaker. Within the stipulations of your report, which is fantastic, it says that there's no traffic hazards or congestion. Was that was done by the chief of police or what?
Chief of police and the chief of fire department. Both said there were no problems.
Willard Cox, I live at 1039 Market Street and my back property joins theirs. And my fence keeps our dogs in. I don't mind that at all, but every time I stick my head out the back door or there's any noise in the neighborhood, they bark. And they are outside an awful lot. I think it would devalue our property. We've got a nice area there. A lot of people in that area has really updated their homes, put new roofs on, painted, kept all their outdoors sheds in good shape. And I think it would devalue the property. And if that's a domino effect, a lot of people on Westwood up there is going to be very ticked. I'm thoroughly against it.
Anyone else? Questions from the board?
You made a motion and I believe Dr. Smith had the second.
What was the motion?
To approve.
Kathy?
Shawna, would, would you amend your motion to put a time limit on it? This board has done that many times, and I think that if we put a six-months time frame on it, and it would have to be reviewed again in six months, that might solve a lot of the problems that the neighbors have.
Okay, just making sure she stays into the guidelines of...
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I move to make an amendment to my motion for a six-months re, is it a reevaluation that we call that or is it, do they have to come back?
To approve the special use permit with reevaluation in six months.
There you go.
So, so she can operate, put in six months, as long as she's by and the guidelines. Yeah, what Joe said.
No, that's not what, I think what Kathy's asking for is in review in six months. To come back and...
Come back in six months, where I see what's going on.
Well, not just at the stat, at the end of...
No, they have to come back for the official approval in six months.
Every period, we evaluate the special use permit conditions, and if the people are complying with it, we don't bring them back to the board, we just continue. We just continue. But that, I understand. You got it right.
And Mike, just to follow up, you've already covered this, just to make sure it's clear for everybody. This goes, if this is approved from this board, it still goes to the alderman and then they approve it. And then if it's renewed every six months, just so I'm clear, they don't have to come back. It's just approved by the alderman, isn't it?
Well...
No, they'll need to be at the city council, meaning that will be the actual hearing to approve the permit, right?
After tonight, there will be a public hearing if it's approved or denied and they appeal it at the Board of Aldermen. Whether that six-month approval comes here or the Board of Aldermen.
Okay.
And that probably be up to...
The Board of Aldermen.
No, I think only the Board of Aldermen can say the...
It'll come here because we have to issue a review.
It's going to expire at the end of six months.
Typically, what's been done is we issue a six-month review that is... Was previously Carlos' job, which would now be your job to review in six months. If you find problems that need to come back before this board to be addressed, we would reconvene and discuss it. If there are no complaints or issues, you had the authority to go forward with that, if I remember correctly.
Then you're asking for a staff review at the end of six months.
Okay. Then that's a question.
As opposed to reconsideration.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear.
I mean, that's how it's been done.
A staff review of the terms and conditions that I've written.
Well...
And in that six months, the people that may still be against it and still, they would have to provide evidence to substantiate their claims that it is devaluing their property or causing a nuisance to their area. You know, right now, you know, you listen to it and it sounds like a Walmart's going in and there's going to be a ton of traffic. She's probably going to only have four or five, maybe six clients a day. I mean, I'm thinking, at the most, you know, it's just an in-home... You know, we allow gun sales in some houses now. We allow a lot of in-home businesses now with a special use permit.
But we always base that on the property owners, too.
Well, correct. I mean, it's still the same process. But, you know, the concerns that are brought forward now with this particular thing are, in my opinion, slightly exaggerated some. We don't know what it's going to cause. And if she gets big enough to where there is that much traffic, then she can rent a space somewhere and grow. She's not wanting to grow that big. She's already stated that. So I think, you know, we should run with it and have it reviewed in six months. And if the people still feel that it's a problem in their neighborhood, then they can come back for that review and their input can be notated at that time and we can move forward. So you want to have a meeting versus just a staff report? I would like to see it come back before the board instead of a staff. Before this? Correct.
That's what she stipulated as well.
So you're issuing it for six months?
Yes.
And that will trigger a reconsideration?
Correct.
To allow the homeowners next to her to accept or to feel...
To evaluate it based on these terms and conditions, to talk to the neighbors and see if... And give the neighbors a chance to present their case one more time or even if there is a problem at that time. I think giving them a chance to operate their business, I think we should allow that. If it doesn't work, we can tell them they need to find a spot. So what I'm hearing then is a motion to approve a six-month special use permit.
That's what I think I'm hearing, too.
Yes.
You made the motion, so...
Yes.
Okay.
After taking the revised, I will second.
Thank you.
Will call, please.
Gary Smith?
Yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Anthony Grass?
Yes.
Shauna Zerwood?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Kathleen Waltz?
Yes.
Gary Roth?
I was going to go, no.
No? Motion passes 6-1-0.
Next on the agenda, Robertson Outdoors LLC is requesting a special use permit to erect and operate a V-shaped, double-sided, 10-foot-by-20-foot LED digital billboard at 716 St. Genevieve Drive. Do we have a representative here on that?
Yeah. We're going to have a staff report first.
I'll tell you one thing, you people are as bad as Saint Mary's. They put up a tin shed behind, beside my house and opened a pit in there. Taxidermy.
All right. The staff report is to install and operate a digital, uh, I'm sorry, the special use permit application is to install and operate a digital LED billboard at 716 St. Genevieve Drive. That is in a C1 general commercial zone district. The application was submitted on December 14th. Hearing notice was placed in the Herald on December 26th. Notice mailed to applicant and adjoining property owners December 19th. Police and Fire Department chiefs notified on the 20th and responded on the 31st. The property is bordered by mostly commercial purpose property, including an auto dealer to the north across Highway 61, restaurant to the east and a bank to the west. It is bordered by a medical office to the south. Southeast corner of the lot is approximately 240 feet from an R1 single-family residential zone district. According to the drawing submitted, the billboard would be approximately 440 feet from an R1 single-family residential zone district. The applicant plans to purchase the property contingent upon granting of the special use permit. Again, you have the applicable municipal code sections cited on signs. If you go to municipal code section 405, 205-F, the table summary, it's similar to our first case that states an LED digital message sign type requires special use permit from Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Aldermen. And if you go down to municipal code section 405, 205-G, it states electronic digital signs are permitted in C1, C2, I1, and I2 zoning districts that are located in the following roadways, 500, 600, 700 block of Center Drive, 600,000 block of Roche Drive, St. Gen Drive, Highway 32, Highway 61, and Progress Parkway, of which this address exists in those addresses. Down at the bottom of that second page, municipal code section 405, 205-J6 states no billboards shall be allowed within the city limits except as provided in Missouri Revised Statute 226-500 to 226-600. But in the next page, the Missouri Department of Transportation is responsible in those sections for regulating off-premises outdoor advertising adjacent to controlled travel ways, that's MoDOT's term. According to Sections 226-500 to 226-600 and 7 CSR 10-6, off-premises signs located along controlled travel ways are required to obtain an outdoor advertising permit from MoDOT. However, Route 61 in this particular instance is not a reg... is not regulated for outdoor advertising, therefore no permit is required from MoDOT. I believe in the electronic staff report I sent you, you've got an email from the MoDOT representative. Next down, special use regulations. And then 405-2B is concerning if the board should find negative. We went through that before. If you go down to specific findings of fact, it is hereby found that the requested use with the below stated terms and conditions will not substantially increase traffic hazards or congestion, will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, will not substantially increase fire hazards, will not adversely affect the general welfare of the community, will not overtax public utilities, and does not conflict with the comprehensive city plan. Staff recommendance... I'm sorry. Staff recommends the following motion: Approval conditioned on the following. Abide by all restrictions in municipal code concerning signs and specifically concerning electronic digital signs. Abide by the applicable sections of Missouri Revised Statute 226-500 to 226-600 and no additional signs of this type to be installed on this property.
State your name.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I had no neighbor feedback on this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Robinson. I'm with Robinson Outdoor and I'm from Perryville, Missouri. And what we are doing is we're creating a digital network. The billboard industry has really changed in the last few years. And what the digital billboard industry is doing is that we can change messages on your ad. For example, if you're a restaurant, you could advertise breakfast. You could advertise lunch. You could advertise dinner. For example, if you are wanting to hire new people, you could advertise help wanted. You could also, I could take a picture of you, sir, and put happy birthday. And I could send this back to the office and we could have that up for you in minutes. Things are really changing. And this would bring a network to this community. It would allow this community to rotate into other communities as well. For example, if I'm a John Deere dealership, I could advertise here, we're going to, we're building one in Perryville, one in Chester, one in Cape Girardeau. In other words, they could rotate around and hit all of those markets at a very economical rate. This is new technology, guys, and that's why I'm excited about it. We can do something that hasn't been done in the past. Now, the really, really, really neat part for you guys, this is it. Let's say that there's a tornado coming. This billboard will recognize it has a software that interfaces with the...
Natural Weather Service.
Natural, uh, the Weather Service. And we would broadcast and all the advertisers would then go down and we would advertise this tornado's coming. I don't know if you've ever been in a tornado. Down in Perryville, we had one come right by my business and it wiped out a whole row of houses. Very sentimental, very tough situation. This billboard would recognize that and would do that for you. Also, amber alerts. If there would be a child that would be molested or would be whatever, it would advertise this situation. Flooding, for example, could be recognized. Also, um, we would give to the city a space. This would allow you to advertise the jurdafet, would allow you to use it for any purpose that you want to use it for. I think the local businesses would see that as a home run. You would work with my office to do the artwork or you could do the artwork yourself. We would help you with this. That's kind of, that's kind of my story. I have with me tonight an LED expert. His name is Chris Kern and he can answer any technical questions. Chris, if I could ask for you?
My name's Chris Kern. I'm currently residing in Quincy, Illinois. I'm originally from Perryville. I've spent the last 24 years in the billboard and digital technology industry around the country. I've built north of 1,500 of these in about 25 or 26 states. Not only have I been on this side of the podium as the former deputy mayor in Quincy, Illinois, I sat at your table as the chair of your committee, so I respect both sides of the coin. It's certainly not easy to make some of these decisions, but when you look at how the industry's changed over the last few years, you know, there's a reason that cities went down the path of trying to really restrict billboards because there was a proliferation of billboards everywhere. Because, you know, there wasn't digital. You put as many billboards up as you could because it was one billboard at a time. Now you've eliminated that. One billboard can solve the purpose for a whole entire community. And so, a couple of unique things with the, with this technology is it will brighten and dim based on ambient light, so you're not going to have a tremendous amount of ambient light bleeding over into any communities. There's no safety hazards, as you stated, from police and fire. Virginia Tech University, the Tantella Institute, and the federal DOT have all conducted traffic and light studies on these boards. And it's 100% conclusive that there's no deterrent to traffic or deterrent to the commercial area in which that board resides. As Ed said, a lot of the things that are unique with the board is the software. We do use the best software and best provider of this technology in the industry. They're out of Atlanta, Georgia. Their technology is very intuitive, where it can read social media, can read news alerts, RSS feeds with sports, all of those things, and it feeds data to that board. We have final determination as to what gets posted on the board because it comes through our, you know, our system where we say, okay, you know, that's relevant to, in this case, St. Genevieve. And we can approve it on the fly from our phones, our iPads, what have you, and be able to update that message. So as you look at those things, you know, a couple, it's been more than a couple of years ago now, probably in 2010, there was a notorious bank robber in the United States that was robbing banks. He was called the Grandad Bank Robber. And the FBI called me, had me come down, and I didn't know what I was getting myself into. I walk into the FBI office in St. Louis and Fox, CNN, MSNBC, all of those folks are there, and they said, "We need your help." How many of these... They finally had a picture of him. How many of these can we put on a board around the country? And we end up putting him on 1,600 boards and we caught him in about four days. You know? And then there's this Ally Kemp story. If you ever get a chance to look it up, it's from Kansas City. It's extremely powerful. She was murdered, leaving the swimming pool as a 19-year-old home for college. Didn't come home that night. Her dad went to look for her and found her behind the pool shed. Went a year with not a single lead. He came to us at Lamar, asked us to help out. They had a picture of what they thought was a truck in the neighborhood at the time. We posted on every billboard in Kansas City, St. Louis, you know, six or seven surrounding states. Next thing you know, somebody's driving by it one day. He says, "The light was hitting it just perfectly and I recognized the sketch of the truck." That guy worked on my pool and he was from Connecticut. Missouri State Police called Connecticut, put a rescuer out. They arrest the guy, extradite him back to Missouri. He's on death row. You know, so I mean, it's very powerful what this technology has done versus billboards of the old. You know, when you painted them and they would flag and peel and everything else. And so, we're excited to have the opportunity to bring that to St. Genevieve. I've been working with Ed for about 20 years in multiple capacities. And when he called and asked me to get involved in this, I was pretty excited because, you know, we're building them a lot of places. And, you know, Quincy, Illinois, where I live, has a huge historic district. I live in a house that was built in the 1800s and I respect that side of it so well. And when I came to Quincy, they said, "No, we're not going to allow digital billboards." We got them to allow one and it's been a huge success for them and for the community and the business owners as a whole. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have as well.
My question was that when Ed was speaking earlier, maybe this is directed towards Ed. He stipulated that there's going to be a part of this that helps the city with national weather, flooding, amber alerts and things of that nature. Is this any cost to the city?
No, there is no cost whatsoever. This is a service that we want to do for the community and I want the community to know. I have a past and I have a history in my stone company where I worked very closely. I have a location in Kansas City and two of them in Ohio. And we work very, very closely with the community to give them what they need and work with them. And in this situation, I pledge to you that I would do my very best to work with you any way I can for whatever your needs may be. I have a very powerful tool and I think that it's very important to me that I become part of your community. And I want to help and I pledge to you that I will work with you.
And that's a great question. So give you an example of what we're modeling this off of. Bridgeton, obviously Lambert Airport. There was the first two digital billboards built in St. Louis. I built back in 2005 or '06 and they were in Bridgeton. Bridgeton had a billboard ban. They had a digital ban, everything of the sort. They didn't allow billboards anymore. I went to Bridgeton, worked with the city administration, the mayor and the city council, and got it approved to build two of them, just like Ed's, wanting to do back-to-back one location. And we gave the city one advertising spot on that board in perpetuity, as long as we had it. And they advertised the Berry, you know, I think it's Berry Creek Golf Course, and they advertised their fireworks. And their fire department will do, hey, we're going to, you know, Saturday, we're going to have child safety car seat checks and we're going to do a blood drive and we're going to do these things. And so your city will have autonomous use of a spot on that board to be able to use in whatever fashion that they deem necessary.
And I would like to pledge to you that we will do everything we can to work with you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not quite sure how to ask this, but I'm picturing this big blinky sign that's rolling all the time.
Yeah, sure.
Because you're flipping the signs really fast. How fast?
Yeah, so great question. It's actually regulated by the federal government, even though... It's actually regulated by the federal government, even though it's not regulated on 61 here because of MoDOT and the regulations, you know, getting rid of regulatory issues on 61. We will abide by the Missouri state law, which is eight seconds with no flashing, no intermittent light. It won't be an on-premise sign that's flashing and got, you know, and got fireworks and all that, it can't. We will not do that. It will be mandated where it's eight-second dwell times and then an immediate flip. So you won't even notice it's changing, it's just, literally, one just disappears and one appears with no...
But every eight seconds.
Every eight seconds. And that's what Missouri state statute is. The federal government actually recommends six, believe it or not, but Missouri adopted an eight. State of Illinois has a 10.
And that probably is an okay thing on a major six to eight-lane highway?
Actually, it's quite contrary, you know, you want it to flip even faster on an interstate because of your traffic going by so fast. With this board being at a, you know, essentially at a stoplight or at a 25 mile an hour zone, eight seconds is, I mean, in a perfect world, you'd actually have it maybe move a little faster because, you know, you don't have as far to read it. You know, on an interstate, you can see this thing from two miles away, you're going to see this thing from, you know, a quarter to a half of a mile as you approach it. So really, as an advertiser approaches it, they're going to see maybe three spots, give or take, depending on traffic, light, all of those other things.
I have another question. Unless I missed it, how tall is the sign going to be?
So our plan is to build a 10-foot haggle, so that means it's 10-foot above ground.
That would be about 25, 35 foot. And ma'am, we wanted to get it up high enough where it doesn't intercept or you can see underneath of it real well and it doesn't have any traffic hazard as you drive by.
And how will that impact the sign that's next door advertising the restaurant?
And that's what Ed was saying, it'll be above it, so as you're driving down the...
It's going to be higher than that sign?
No, I don't think it's going to necessarily be above it, ma'am. But, you know, there's probably not a perfect world where you can do anything that doesn't block something a little bit, but we did, we did drive by and look at it. In my opinion, it is certainly suitable for that area, the height.
Most signs in a municipality are 15-foot haggles, so 15-foot above ground level. So if you go ground, 15-foot to the bottom of the sign and then it's 10-foot tall, so the overall height would be 25. In Ed's case, he's saying out of respect for the other signs in the area, he thinks he may need to take it a little bit higher. We will haggle stick it, make sure it aesthetically is pleasing for St. Genevieve Boulevard before it was ever to get built.
And if that is a problem, we would address that. But I think that, I think that whenever you drive it and you look at it, which I, we did drive it back and forth and back and forth and we thought that would be the most desirable and the best for that use. But that could be addressed, ma'am. If you felt that needed to be addressed, we would address that.
It's actually, when you think aesthetics, you know, the lower to the ground, the more clutter you have from a naked eye standpoint. So when you're driving, one of the things in the Tantella report on the study was, as it got higher off the ground, it was less a deterrent to traffic. As you put it down in the ground, you couldn't see people coming in and out of parking lots, you know, you couldn't see traffic because you had this board here. So you bring it up and then it loses that deterrent, was what the report suggested. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So, I appreciate the fact for the amber alert and the weather alert, how does that actually work? Does it just automatically kick on when it comes to our area or is somebody going...
No, it actually automatically kick on.
The software has an interface with, you can explain that.
Yeah, so the software's built on, it's got RSS feed integration, right? So as an amber alert, you know how your phones go off when an amber alert happens, right? As soon as that happens, our software picks that up by counties that we designate for an area. So whatever that zip code is that fires that amber alert, that board software picks it up, it preempt every advertiser and throws the amber alert up. Is exactly how that happens. Same thing with the National Weather Service. Yes? Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Hold on a second. Nothing? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to ask a question. So on 405, Section 405-205J, it states, "No billboard shall be allowed within the city limits except as provided in the following sections." What are, what are those stipulations there?
There's a lot there that controls the height and the distance from the road, the size of the sign, the scrolling text, kind of that. When I talk to MoDOT, this isn't a controlled travel way, so those don't apply, but what I put in my terms and what I think they alluded to is that they plan to still abide by those things that control content and light and things of that nature.
The same as if it was a MoDOT?
Correct. And the special use permit, if you still choose to adopt it, would have them abide by those.
What is our city code on billboards?
Is there a more specific question with our city code on billboards?
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much it besides the definition, you know, it's an off-premise sign. Everything that's applicable as far as the sign ordinance is quoted in the staff report. But if you're asking if billboard is in the table per se, it's not in the table. It doesn't say billboard, but it does state off-premise sign, which is, this is what this is, and that's allowed. So if you go to the table here, off-premise is allowed in C1, C2, C4, I1, I2A and H1. It's just not allowed in residential or multi-home district.
So billboard is different than an off-premise sign?
Well, billboard is an off-premise sign. It advertises businesses that are off-premise.
And if they, if they were to apply for, if they wanted to put in a, just a standard billboard, just had, you know, your typical print advertising on it, would that, would they require a special use permit for that?
Yeah, that's a, well, no, that's not LED. Yeah, it's off-premise then and if, hold on here, so it would not require a special use permit. The special use permit literally is to do with the digital LED aspect of it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait a second.
I have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Motion is to approve. Gary Smith?
Yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Anthony Grass?
Yes.
Shawna Zerwood?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Kathleen Waltz?
No.
Gary Roth?
No.
Motion carries 5-2-0.
Do we have the old business?
We do not, sir. Motion up here.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.